I called the June 24th, 2025 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, matters presented by the public that will take up in the 6:00 PM session as Agenda Item 13. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and being part of your county government. Before we start with Agenda Items, I'm going to ask Mr. Wagner if he would introduce someone that is part of our summer staff.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, we're fortunate to have an intern working with us this summer. Mr. Carson Foley is a graduate of Bassett High School. And I'm going to ask him, come to the podium and give you a brief introduction if that's okay.
All right.
At least we didn't know.
Hello, I'm Carson Foley, and I graduated Bassett High School about a month ago, and I'm admitted to the University of Virginia, where I'll be going in the fall to study environmental science and public policy.
Okay, Carson, welcome.
He's pretty modest. He also has a degree from Patrick Henry Community College that he received in May. Gradually, he might go to school. So quite a bit of a consummate in high school. He did pick that other university in Virginia to attend, but we're not holding that against him. But we have some activities planned for him this summer. We're starting a lot about what we do in local government, but he's going to do some research on housing incentives for us. He's also going to spend some time in the Public Service Authority under environmental regulation and those types of things as well. But he's getting a little bit of exposure here with the public this summer, so we're glad to have him on board.
Great. Well, again, welcome, and I'm sure the board will take its opportunity to greet you as well individually. For business considerations today, we'll start with Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to items of consent?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the item of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, Monthly Report on Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Scott, welcome.
You did catch Dale's statement about the health school. Where is your name again? This is a report as of May 30th. Personal property collection, we collected 88.59% of the 24 personal property taxes. During the month, we collected $387,208. Real estate as of May 30th, we've collected 94.29% of the 24 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $117,245. Since January 1 of '25, TACS has collected $575,818, and our debt set off on June 15th, received $74,971 from the state. For the year, the total collect is $353,676. And so far, in the month of June, we have 123 DMV stops collected. July 9th, we have scheduled another judicial, nonjudicial sale right here in the boardroom, so that's coming up two weeks, approximately.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Grinstaff at this time? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, we'll have an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark E. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and forward for your someday for June, invisible development of young professional improvement or as many as you like, Virginia Museum of Natural History. And they will talk about the board's continuing education professionals. Elmer Hodge will speak about a number of items there. They'll also get a behind-the-scenes tour at the museum. In August, that group will have a table set up for Henry County's new teacher orientation so that they can market the young professionals group to that demographic for the new teachers coming in for next year, July 10th. There will be a franchising, what fits in Martinsville Henry County workshop. Heather Rosen from Fanette will be here to conduct that, help folks that have potential business ideas. There were seven, Valerie conducted seven office and site visits, and you can see where those were as she gets around the community and works with our existing businesses. In our marketing division, we'll talk about unemployment report in a minute. Staff attended a roundtable that we had back in the beginning of June, on June 3rd, actually. I have a lot of staff at the class Hooker Awards. Everyone at Beaumont Arts, visiting Martinsville was one of the two award winners of the Hooker Award this year, which is really exciting about that, for all the work that this department has done for Beaumont Arts and through the Arts Community. It's been a big help. We updated our wage and benefit survey. You'll see, if you look at the back, the chart that shows that 2004 manufacturing wages in Henry County have increased almost 87.6%. That's nearly 10% year-over-year, so we continue to increase companies and have existing companies paid better as that manufacturing wage moves up, and we're excited about that and proud of that statistic on behalf of the companies. I mean, they're the ones that are doing this, and we're thankful for their, if they continue to increase that wage rate. Our chairman, folks have, you can see, they had information requests, a lot of calls, bulk distribution went out to five different businesses. Those are listed, local businesses. They're working on building the trail, Love Need, that campaign, biweekly news class, 70,000 subscribers, 250 tourism partners, and again, the five different award staff and tourism officers, obviously involved. Sarah Hodge and Kelly Rowland will be there to accept that on behalf of this market. In our marketing area, we've taken a lot of photos of pretty case winners. We, that vision, Tyler Barley's vision, gave out almost $20,000 to small businesses this year to help them grow their business. They're involved in the visitor markets, the lap bullfrog campaign, marketing campaign. We've got a lot of drone footage taken, a lot too, that come across in the paper sort of the shell. If you drive by the new, lots of the shell over the next couple of days, you'll see the walls actually being erected on-site with the till now process. It'll be pretty interesting to watch. In our talent development, we have the staff that attended the consultant forum. We've been four or five of those in years, continuing to market our sites to that, to that group of folks. They had the final meeting of the campaign to build trail, to build trail lot as part of Henry County's style of community brand. And there's a movie being filmed here. I can't really give you a lot of information on it now, but their finalized location, and it is a fairly major production that Sarah Hodge and her staff are working on. You'll see the unemployment rate has ticked up a little bit. Again, we really don't have an explanation for that, so we'll see that unemployment could be seasonal. There are a lot of things that happen every year that could affect that. And then the last page, we have a board asked us to do a survey of local companies and see how much money is spent. We get a really quick review, and you can see over these there that nearly $5 million dollars from the local companies spent, is spent in the community with these different kinds of services, which is really good if that money turns over. And we also asked them to give us ideas about services that they would like to have, like to get a service from in Henry County if those services were available. And this would give us, and some of our staff, a potential of companies who might be able to recruit to get those services here so they don't have to go outside of Henry County and find that, that type of need that they have. So we'll be working on that, and we'll continue to affect that. But it's good to see local businesses spending their money in our community with other local businesses. Be happy to answer any questions we have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark at this time? Thank you. Takes us to Agenda Item Number Eight, we'll take up financial matters, beginning with Eight A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $19,942 from the state asset forfeiture funds to purchase a 2025 all-terrain vehicle. Sheriff Davis has stated that vehicle enhanced the department's capabilities and responded to incidents in woodland drains, as well as other events throughout Henry County. And Lieutenant Colonel Hairston is here, should you have any questions.
Okay, the board has this as part of its working papers, as far as the background and the additional information just provided by Mr. Wagner. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $19,942 from state asset forfeiture funds for the purchase of the ATV as requested.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight B, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services Grant for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is requesting that the board allocate grant funds in the amount of $45,000 received from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services through its School Resource Officer Grant Program. Sheriff Davis intends to use the funds to continue funding and providing a school resource officer at the Accra Academy for the upcoming school year. The grant does require a local match of $13,042, which will come from the sheriff's office's current budget.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of $45,000 received through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Service for School Resource Officer Grant Program as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight C, An Award of Contract Referencing Food for Inmates for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is requesting the board to award a contract to J.L. Culpepper &amp; Company Incorporated of Davenport, Virginia, to provide food for the Henry County Adult Detention Center. The contract does not include a fixed spending amount since the number of inmates can fluctuate throughout the year. However, the county's fiscal year 2026 budget includes $730,000 for this purpose. The pricing for the contract is based on an existing agreement with the Henry County Public Schools, which will not give effect until June 30, 2026.
In regard to this awarding of contracts, what is the action the board would like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to J.L. Culpepper &amp; Company Incorporated to supply food for the Adult Detention Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight D, Award of Contract Referencing Administration Building Bathroom Renovations.
Staff is asking the board to award a contract of $155,290 to Daniel Builders LLC for the renovation of four bathrooms located on the fourth floor of this building. The existing bathrooms are original to the building constructed in 1974 and are not compliant with guidelines set by the Americans with Disabilities Act. The purchasing department has authorized the use of an existing contract with Daniel Builders for this project. As you may have noticed, they just completed the renovations of the six restrooms on the first floor of this building, so this will allow us to bring those second-floor bathrooms up to ADA standards.
Okay, with that, what action would the board like to take in regard to awarding this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract of $155,290 to Daniel's Builders LLC for the bathroom renovations as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, simple question. Are we satisfied with the six bathrooms downstairs?
I will defer that question to Mr. Powell. He's been the project manager all night. I haven't been in them.
Okay.
Yes, we are very pleased with the work. It's taken a little longer, but they ran into a few challenges along the way, but yes, with the finished product, we're very pleased with it.
Okay, great. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight E, An Award of Contract Referencing Parking Lot Resurfacing for the Training Center. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to award a contract of $229,889 to J.C. Joyce Trucking and Paving of Patrick Springs, Virginia, for the repaving of the Training Center parking lot. While in a competitive bid process, J.C. Joyce Trucking and Paving was the lowest responsible bidder. The burden for this project is included in the capital budget.
All right, in regards to awarding of this contract, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract in the amount of $229,889 to J.C. Joyce Trucking and Paving Company Incorporated to repave the parking lot at the Training Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wondered, Matt, not to put you on the spot, do you have anything to say about this? We do get questions, I get questions, just about this type of, we did get questions about this money that we're spending on the building also, just for the infrastructure necessity of this. Do you have anything, or would you just make a comment about it, please?
The greatest portion of this parking lot was built with the original construction of U-Pot, and has not been redone since then. When the construction for the Adult Detention Center was done, the DOT took upon, took on a portion of the driveway and made it a state highway, which actually changed the traffic flow to the parking lot. It also utilized a portion of the parking lot because of the curbing that was required for the adopted road. So this project will, parking lot, if you've been there, it's got more cracks in brass in it than it does asphalt. So this project will remove all the existing asphalt, replace it, and as well as restripe it in compliance with traffic flow with the new pattern, as well as the latest ADA compliance and stuff like that.
Very good. I know during the budget conversation, before the budget was approved, you and I had a lengthy discussion about some of the things that you knew were our priorities, so I decided to give you opportunity just to speak about that a minute. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight F, An Award of Contract Referencing Software Licensing for the Information Technology Department. Mr. Wagner.
Mark Alley, Director of Information Technology, is asking the board to award a contract of $106,071 to Maine Micro Technologies Corporation for Microsoft Office 365 licensing. Mr. Alley explains that the existing Microsoft software used by county staff and the board supervisors is reaching the end of its support life, leaving the county computer network vulnerable, as well as expensive to maintain. The migration to Office 365 aligns with industry standards and will improve the county's cybersecurity productivity and disaster recovery capabilities. The purchasing department has authorized the use of an existing contract for this purchasing, and funding for this project is included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. A portion of the cost will also be reimbursed by the Public Service Authority. And Mr. Alley is here, should you have a specific question?
All right, thank you for that background. With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to award the contract to Maine Micro Technologies Corporation for the amount of $106,071 as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight G, Award of Contract Referencing the Villa Heights Housing Project for Planning, Zoning, and Inspections. Mr. Wagner.
As you know, we've had this similar agenda items on the agenda for three months now for various reasons. Last month or two months ago, when we awarded a contract for the first three homes, we did not have the site ready to build the fourth home. We do have the site ready now, so we're able to award a contract for the fourth home, which was always the original plan, was to build four homes initially. So we're, staff is asking the board to award a contract to Taylor Enterprise, the same company that's building the first three homes, a price of $207,900 to build one house on Lot 12 as part of the housing project. Following a competitive bid process, Taylor was the lowest bidder. Funds for this project were appropriated at your asking.
As far as awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board? Mr. Bryant, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir, it is, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for $207,900 to Taylor Enterprise Incorporated for the construction of a prototype two-house on Lot 12 as part of the Villa Heights Housing Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight H, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Return to Locality Funds for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $54,017 received from the Virginia Department of Health, Return to Locality Funds, sometimes called Four for Life Funds. The funds are derived from a fee for each vehicle registered in Henry County. Authorized expenditures of the funds are for items such as emergency medical services, training supplies, indoor equipment. Currently, the funds are distributed equally between the volunteer rescue squads and the Department of Public Safety. And Mr. Tatum is here, should you have any questions?
As far as this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $54,017 received from the return to locality funds.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Eight I, Categorical Transfer Referencing School Maintenance and Upgrades for the School Board. Mr. Wagner.
School Board is requesting the board's approval of two categorical transfers, $1,200,000 from the destruction category to the maintenance category, and $150,000 from the administration attendance and health category to the maintenance category. Superintendent Dr. Amy Blake-Lewis stated that the total of $1,350,000 will be used to upgrade lighting at some of the schools and to install air conditioning in the accident elementary school gym. And Dr. Dan Lewis here, should you have any questions?
With that, what action would the board like to take as far as these categorical transfers as requested?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the categorical, categorical transfers totaled $1,350,000 as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. That concludes our financial items. It takes us to Agenda Item Number Nine, we'll have informational items, starting with comments from the board and beginning with Dr. Cobbler.
Things are kind of quiet, except to say that I attended the VACO conference with, was JR, Dale, Carson, and who, and Mr. Adams, and that was, it's just always great to be a part of those meetings and to help represent Henry County and the supervisors.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dillon.
Yes, sir. I've actually spoke to some of you all about a couple requests I would like to make, and I'll make those separately, just so they go on record in reference to the district impact funds. And, you know, one of those, I'd like to make a request for $1,000 for a community resource fair in the sandal level community. And, you know, the project will be that, you know, invite the community out, and, you know, some of the local agencies will be invited to come out, including Peetmark Community Services, Housing Resources, Virginia Legal Aid, Salvation Army with the mobile food pantry, Disability, Connect Health and Wellness, DSS, Cooling Crisis, so many different local agencies will be invited out. And, you know, this Empowering Voices has done this throughout Martinsville and Henry County. They've had mental health events, they've had drug addiction events, and wanted to bring this down to the sandal level area. So I would like to make a motion that, you know, we use $1,000 out of the district impact funds to support this event.
You're all second in motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have some questions.
Yes, Ms. McCann.
Mr. Wagner, the way the request was said, and I've talked to Garrett about this, we certainly want to make sure that we're following the basic accounting practice with doing that. Tell me how the county would handle that.
So we would expect the most of this program with integrity and clarity, just like we do all our county finances, that we would expect whoever, in this case, I assume it's Empowering Voices, to submit a W-9, a tax form that allows us to legally disperse funds to them. And then we would also, I envision, requiring them to turn in receipts to show where that funds were spent before we disperse the funds.
Yeah, and I've spoken with, you know, the leaders of that organization, let them know that, you know, prior to receiving any funds, they would have to show exactly what the funds will be used for, and also provide, you know, receipts. So we've had that conversation, and I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, that was going to be my question also, it's a check and balance, basically. You have to have receipts or whatever, so what the expenditure's going for, so the county itself will be covered.
Exactly.
You know, the things we do.
Okay, any other items of discussion or questions that we need to ask? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. And Mr. Dillon, I believe you said you had another item?
Yes, sir, and, you know, very similar, and I've spoken with the folk at Rob Lee Park as well. They understand that, you know, with this request, if it is approved, that, you know, we have to make sure we follow the appropriate accounting processes, that we can, you know, clearly document what the funds were used for and that type of thing. But, you know, Rob Lee Park is, you know, Irishwood District, we don't have a lot, you know, we don't have some of the amenities that other folk have, and Rob Lee Park is one of those places that a lot of the community members use for community events, family reunions, even speaking to, you know, Mr. Ben Gravely. You know, if the county wanted to use that to host an event, or if the sheriff's department wanted to use that to host an event, you know, we'd be willing to, you know, allow that. But it's also a facility that, you know, needs some attention, and in speaking with him, some of the facilities need to be upgraded, whether it's flooring, lighting, painting, and other upgrades. And, you know, would like to make a request of $5,000 to go towards assisting the Rob Lee Park upgrades, and I'd like to make that as a motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? And again, as you mentioned in, in your background on this, Mr. Dillon, it would follow the same accounting procedures?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Do you have any other items, Mr. Dillon?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Ms. McCann.
I do not.
Mr. Bryant.
No, sir, I don't. Other than to say that for those that may be interested in it, immediately after we have our six o'clock meeting, at seven o'clock, I'm going to have a Collinsville District Community Meeting here in the boardroom, and everybody's welcome to stay here. They want to get caught up a little bit with what's going on in the county, so you're welcome.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything. Mr. Wagner.
Just a few good news items. As you know, we've got a pretty robust senior citizens program where we provide activities and some transportation. We were recently granted the opportunity to help our veterans, so our senior citizens is going to take over the Miles for Vets program, where we provide transportation to veterans to VA Hospital in Salem, Virginia, and to Dable, Virginia. They do a really good job with coordinating transportation for seniors, so this is a very small task asked of them, and it's going to be very beneficial to our vets and revenue positive for the county as well, so, through some grant funds. We got word since our last meeting that Henry County is a benefactor of three separate grant programs from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority that will help us tackle the opioid epidemic in our community. One that was, you know, our a priority of this board, and was the creation of the Kenship Navigated Position within the Department of Social Services. The Opioid Abatement Authority granted three years of funding for that program, and that position will help work with foster families and children to get foster children with family members instead of strange homes and those types of things. That'll be, and how to address opioid use within the foster settings and those matters. So it's shown good success in, in Lyco County, so we're hopeful that will replicate success here. We also got a very competitive grant for a region of around $1.5 million to expand the Crisis Intervention Center managed by the Piedmont Community Services. It's located on Collins Boulevard, where if we have someone in a mental health or substance abuse crisis, it may not necessarily warrant medical care. They can go to that facility for now, sub to 23 hours, then they can go there and get care without being admitted to the hospital or, you know, put in jail. One of those two options is generally what happens. So with the expansion of the program, they'll be able to keep those individuals in that facility longer, instead of having to take them to the hospital or jail, can be longer service. So we're glad to get that. And then the third grant, the city agreed to be the fiscal agent on that one. It was a collaborative effort with the Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition to do harm reduction, education, and prevention type matters within our community. So they'll be receiving that too. So our community is fortunate to get those through. The, one other grant that the Public Service Authority has received since our last meeting here too as well, you are aware that we're extending the sewer line of 58 East and the Horse Pasture. We have received grant funds that will allow any resident or business along that line to connect free of charge. So that'll be a $2,500 savings for every resident along that line. So we hope everybody, single one of them, will sign up for that.
That'll be 58 West.
58 West, I'm sorry. I said East, yes.
Sorry.
I know. You said it, now it's on record. Can't change it.
Always. Yeah, so sometimes that $2,500 is a hindrance for someone to sign up, particularly if they're set the tags being, you know, working fine. So this, hopefully, we'll get more people to sign up and help clean up that area and provide social services.
And so with, with the media here, will you provide additional information of where it might start and where it will end, how far it will go?
Yeah, and I don't know that exactly, just to say today.
Sure.
We'll make sure that gets out, and we're going to communicate directly with every resident and business that has, that exists.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. With that, I'll take us into agenda. Item number 10, enter into a closed meeting. If someone will cite the Code of Virginia, it's allowed by Freedom of Information Act to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, the Local Finance Board for the OPEB liability, Patrick and Henry Community College Board, and the Roanoke River Basin Association. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Have a closed meeting on a motion by Ms. McCann, a second by Mr. Bryant. Mr. Powell, will you poll the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted. Multi-meeting requirements under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, were heard, discussed, or considered to close meeting. How do you vote, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have an item to set a public hearing on, I believe, possibly, Ms. McCann, do you have that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Henry County Board of Supervisors hold a public hearing August the 26th to receive public comment on two proposed solar siting agreements between Henry County and Firebird Solar and Thunderbird Solar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to emphasize, this is the motion to set a public hearing.
Yes. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a, an agreement to put forth in a motion for the board's consideration?
Yes, sir, I do. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement with Pennsylvania County, where we will assist them for the next 120 days with the bill and inspection related services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Likewise, we have a unsafe structure consideration for the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $390,000 from the general funds for the purpose of securing or removing approximately 45 unsafe structures in various parts of the county. Hot off the press, by the way.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question or comments? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Dr. Cobble, I believe that you have a countywide appointment for the board's consideration?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Carl Fleming to the Local Finance Board for OPED liability for the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent. I think that covered the items coming out of closed meeting. Mr. Wagner, do you have any additional items that we need to consider prior to a recess? Board members, do you have any? If not, we will declare a recess at 4:39 PM and meet back here properly at 6:00 PM for the night session. I call this 6:00 PM session of the June 24th, 2025 Meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from this afternoon. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in tonight's meeting, is Agenda Item 13. Again, welcome everyone. We'll start tonight with Agenda Item Number 11. We'll have general highway matters, and we have with us from VDOT, Jeff McCambridge. Jeff?
Good evening. Thanks for having me today. Again, like you said, my name is Jeff McCambridge, the Maintenance Operations Manager for Henry and Patrick County. Just to go over a few of the items that we have going on within the county, our mode operations are still in force, so moving every day. We're probably two weeks out of completing our first round, and we'll turn right around and start again completing our second, starting our second round. In the county, we've just finished one turn lane on Route 87 that connects to 220, it's a right turn lane to provide more queue for vehicles turning right towards Martinsville. That's just been completed about a week ago. Yesterday, we started a second safety project at Magnavista Road. Again, it's another turn, right turn lane towards 220. That's under progress, should be completed maybe about first of next week. It'll be paved ready for school year next year. The, the through cuts that's being constructed at Dire Street and 220 there, Dodge Store, McDonald's, there is no work planned there for the next month. They have a issue with getting a new signal pole coming in, and they're expecting it sometime 26, 28 days out. Their plan is to clean up the area around Speedway Hill and refresh the maintenance stone in that area, just because there's no activity going on. And then the unused barrels are going to be removed for, for the time period. Road, road maintenance, all of our slurry seal is completed for the county. Surface treatment has been completed in the county. We still have two roads that are still receiving platnicks. The contractor's currently out of state right now. They moved to North Carolina for four weeks. They're expected back next week, and I don't know which one they'll go to next, but Willer Avenue is scheduled to be overlaid, and then they'll move to Norfolk in the Axton area. That road's getting overlaid. But once they finish those, Henry County will be completed with all schedules till 2025. And that's really all I have right now, unless y'all have questions for me.
Does anyone have questions for Jeff, or something that he needs to pass along to Lisa?
Yeah, I spoke with Ms. Hughes last week, maybe two weeks ago, about Quail Lake Road. The residents there were asking if that road could become a state maintained road, and they had done all of their research. You had to have three houses and 16 feet wide, and road had to be in existence for 20 years. And she actually rode out there and said she was going to do some research. If you could ask her to just get back with me and let me know, or let the gentleman know what the outcome of that is, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will do.
Yes, sir.
Who have any other items? All right, thank you, Jeff. Agenda Item Number 12, conduct a public hearing on a proposed ordinance authorizing the award of bonuses for the Social Services Department. Mr. Wagner, if you want to give us some background on this?
Mr. Lyle?
Mr. Lyle?
Yeah, I will. At the May meeting, the board, within the budget, when the budget was adopted in, in May, the board approved a 1.5% bonus for all county employees, and the budget included money to include the employees of Henry Martinsville Social Services, a joint agency we run with the city. The state social services administrators did, did not feel that the adoption, the public hearing, the adoption of the budget ordinance in itself was enough to meet the satisfaction that bonuses in Virginia have to be approved by ordinance. So they sent several to, to local governments all over Virginia. They sent us sample ordinances of what they wanted, and the ordinance I, I proposed would cover what the state wants, so that the social service workers can get the bonus at the same time the county employees get the bonus. And I, I selected the one that will serve generally, so that in the future, we won't have to re-adopt another ordinance if this board ever funds another budget with an ord, with a bonus in it.
Okay, and there are other localities, and I've seen it on their agenda as well.
That's right.
And it's been properly advertised as far as this public hearing. So with that, I will open a public hearing to take input on this at 6:05. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this public hearing as, as far as this proposed ordinance? Anyone? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:05. What action would the board desire to take as far as adopting this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, authorizing the county administration to distribute the funds designated by the board for employee bonuses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda Item 13, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board under the Agenda Item, matters presented by the public? Anyone? Seeing no indication that anyone desires to do that. Dr. Cobble, I believe you had one item that you wanted to mention prior to adjournment tonight?
Yeah, it's about the Reedstone property in Bassett. We've had a couple of media ask me about what's going on there, and we, there has been a lot there, a lot of communication, a lot of emails, a lot of calls about the Reedstone property. What we were told emphatically is that that property, the words that have been used is urgent, emergency, and dangerous. And I did an interview yesterday, and also, Lee's not here tonight, but I did just want to just say publicly that, again, there has been an inordinate amount of research on that property, and we were, it was recommended by an architectural structural person too that, that it needed to be taken down immediately. So that is what's going on with that, and I just wanted to also be on public record for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wagner, are there any other items of business that we need to consider prior to adjournment?
I do not have anything else.
Board members, do you have any? If not, I will accept a motion for adjournment. So move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.